My phone says it is 6 o'clock AM. I'm AM, I tell you, I'm loopier than usual these days. 6 o'clock PM on September 24th, 2020, and I will call the meeting of planning and zoning to order. Will you please call the roll?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Debbie Moore?
Present.
Glenn Johnson?
Present.
Cheryl Lee?
President, and I don't know if it's just me, but it sounds real muffled. Is that the same for you guys?
You sound...
No.
I'm not here.
Sounds good. Sounds good here.
Glenn Johnson?
I'm still here.
And Ishmael Harris?
Here.
Pablo Serna?
Here.
And Cynthia?
It is sounding muffled now.
All right, and then we also have Greg Sherry on the line. I just made him up to him on this. What, yeah, I have the mic on.
It does sound muffled.
Can you understand us if we speak slowly and distinctly? Is that a no from everybody?
It's just everyone sounds like they're far in the distance. Let me see if I can get some earbuds.
Present.
Was that better, commissioners?
Does that sound better, guys at home?
How's everybody doing?
Thank you, Greg.
We have a quorum, Madam Chair.
We have a quorum, and we want to welcome Carrie. She's our new commissioner. We welcome you.
Thank you so much.
Give us a 30-second background of how long you've been here and what your background is.
Well, I am a recent transplant to Bastrop, but I grew up halfway between Austin and Bastrop, out off 969. I currently am the Director of Development for a small city just west of Austin called Rollingwood, if you're familiar. And I, before that, I worked for an architecture firm for several years.
Terrific. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
I'll move on to item number two, citizen comments. This is the time when we will invite citizens to come forward. Do we have any comments that have come in? Or, I see no one here.
At this time, we have the plan email up and running in case we do get any comments from the public, and at this time, there have been none, Madam Chair.
Thank you. If anyone wants to make any comments about anything that's not on the agenda, feel free to send in your email. Items for individual considerations is number three. 3A is consider action to approve meeting minutes from the August 27 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Have you all had a chance to look them over? Are there any additions, corrections, or amendments?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Glenn? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
If Carrie wasn't here, she'll probably abstain.
I'll abstain.
Okay. Item 3B, consider action to approve the revised preliminary plat for the Colony MUD 1B, Section 5 and 6, being 31.583 acres out of the Jose Manuel Bangs survey, abstract 5, located west of FM 969 at the west extension of San Houston Boulevard, within the statutory extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A of our packet. Ms. Bills?
Colin leaves me on my presentation, so I know what I'm talking about. So, the first thing we have before we tonight is a revised preliminary plat. This, they had, they did a preliminary plat for the entire section of the Colony MUD 1B back in, I think, July of last year was the date that that got approved. Back then, it went to the Planning and Zoning Commission and then City Council. We've since revised the rules, and now Planning and Zoning is the deciding body for all plats. So...
And the City Council didn't act on it because...
No, they did act on it. They approved it in July.
They did approve it, okay.
Yeah, they did approve in July. But you guys reviewed and recommended, and then they approved it back in July for the entire area of 1B.
And this, okay.
So, what they're requesting today is a revision to a couple sections within 1B. So, within 1B, they've kind of, they phased it out into six different sections, and what they're looking at is revising two of those sections. If you look at the map on the screen, the large, the blue area... Are you flipping back and forth, Colin?
I don't know if there's any right now.
Oh, okay. There's a, the larger blue area is the Colony MUD full development, which at full build out will be 4,300 LUEs of utility service, which is going to be a few less homes than that, but it'll be probably around 4,000 living units out there. So, what they're, the Colony MUD 1B is the second phase going west from 969, FM 969. Colony MUD 1A has largely plotted, they've got most of that plotted, and most of that infrastructure on the ground already for those lots. They've started some of the other sections of the MUD 1B, and what, with the market changes, with the way things are selling out there, they're coming in to revise Sections 5 and 6 to make them smaller lots. Section 5 was laid out in the preliminary plat as 60-foot lots, and they're wanting to reduce those to 50-foot lots. For Section 6, those have been 80-foot lots, and they're wanting to make those smaller 45-foot lots. Both of those lot types are allowed in their consent agreement, which is the overarching document that regulates the Colony MUD, because they are within our statutory ETJ. With this amendment to their preliminary plat, they've already done, we were still kind of under our old process, they'd done the preliminary drainage, preliminary infrastructure as part of that preliminary plat. This does not change any of the storm water, the water lines, or the wastewater lines for this section. It's just increasing the density a little, by about 20, by 22 units. So, that is what they're requesting. So, this, from this preliminary plat, the next thing, they'll come, they'll finalize their public improvement plans, and then they'll come in with a final plat once they build that infrastructure or put down a fiscal surety in order to do that infrastructure. So, that's what this first one is. The DRC reviewed for consistency with our regulations and the Colony Consent Agreement, and they recommended approval of this revised preliminary plat.
As submitted?
As submitted, as submitted in your packet.
Was everybody at home able to understand Jennifer? Do you have any questions? I'll go with you guys first since you're not here. Hello?
Are they able to talk?
I don't have any questions, but it's still a little bit hard to hear everything.
It is still hard to hear?
It is. I'm not able to make out most of what things said.
Okay, well, maybe we'll talk a little slower, and it might be a little bit easier to hear. Carrie, do you have anything you want to ask?
No, not right now.
Okay. Glenn?
I have a question.
I don't have any questions.
I have a question. The, I missed all the sentence, the 22 minutes you said, is that the drainage in the...
22 lots?
Oh, 22 lots.
Yeah, they're increasing the overall lot count of the entire section from 370 to 392.
Okay, is there, with 22 more lots, is, you say there's no significant change in the drainage?
No.
Stormwater drainage?
No, they'd oversized their drainage to be able to handle, because they were, they would have built larger houses with larger amenities on those, and so it'll be the same amount of impervious cover.
Okay, thank you.
Did you guys understand Jennifer's answer at home? Did you hear?
Yes, I heard it, and I understood. I don't have any questions, and there's basically no change in the drainage. Is that, was the question correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, we're currently under review for their public improvement plans for these sections, and have looked at that increase that, so we know it doesn't impact the infrastructure.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move to adopt the revised preliminary plat.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Carrie. Call the roll, please, ma'am.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Glenn Johnson?
Yes.
Carrie Kahler?
Yes.
Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Cheryl Lee?
Yes.
Greg Sherry?
Yes.
Ishmael Harris?
Yes.
Pablo Serna?
Yes.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
That's your attendee?
Our attendee?
Oh, Charlotte, okay.
We have a little technology glitch here and there, so please bear with us.
Yeah, this is, this is the challenge when we have the half-in, half-out meetings, that they're a little more challenging than the all-in-person or the all-online.
That's okay. We'll move on to item 3B.
That's a learn.
Move on to item, by the time you get everything straight, we'll be back to normal again.
Exactly, that's how it'll work.
We'll work that way. Item 3B, consider action to approve the revised preliminary plat for the Colony MUD 1B, Section 5 and 6.
No, you're...
I'm sorry, I just didn't, I thought it sounded familiar. Item 3C, consider action to approve the West Bastrop Village Phase 1, Section 1 preliminary plat consisting of 25.557 acres out of the Nancy Blakey survey, number 98, located west of FM 20, within the statutory extraterritorial jurisdiction, or ETJ, of the city of Bastrop, Texas, shown as Exhibit A?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Bills?
So, this is the first section of the West Bastrop Village Municipal Utility District. So, this is a project that's been in the works for quite a while, that we've seen a couple different iterations of it over the years. They originally got their consent agreement and a plan development agreement, master plan for this development back in 2006, due to market downturns, different challenges, and then utility challenges, it's taken until now that we're finally to the point that they're getting their plats on the ground and starting to get ready for when they're able to turn around some houses. Part of that is that getting their wastewater and water capacity for the mud district. So, what they're coming forward to, you see this is on the location map, the red area is the entire development, the pink area is what we're discussing today, the first phase. At full build out, it'll be 1,200 units of residential and about, and up to 125,000 units of, or square feet of commercial space, with at least 15.3 acres of civic space and 75 acres of open space. That's what their master plan calls for, for this development. In this area, they are in our statutory ETJ. They're regulated by their Plan Development Agreement and Consent Agreement with the city, which was adopted in 2006. This is the first, Section 1, Phase 1, I think I have that backwards on there, it's Phase 1, Section 1. I have it backwards on my staff report, that's where I have it backwards. Somewhere I'm backwards. So, you can see the lot layout here on the screen. They have two points of access with this section. The main thoroughfare for the development will be Weaverton Boulevard to the south that comes off of FM 20. They're working with Tech Dot. Eventually, that'll be a signalized light when the warrants hit and the development gets big enough. There will be a signal, traffic signal at that intersection. They also have a planned, what Tech Dot tells me, to be a right-in, right-out intersection to the north at, I've lost the name of that street, but it's, a right-in, right-out means they can only turn, you know, right from the driving lane into it, and then right out of it. They can't turn across traffic to go into that driveway. So, there won't need to be a signal at that intersection. All of these lots are alley-loaded, so you can see that there's four main thoroughfares that they'll, that the houses will front onto, and then they have private alleys that'll be in the back that they will take parking access off of. There are three reserve lots to the front. Two of those will be a feature commercial space, and one will be a drainage, open-space lot for this section. This area is a little over 25 acres, it's 91 lots, and the lots range anywhere from about 4,000 square feet up to 6,000 square feet, and 72 got left on there from something else. So, what happens when I do my presentations late at night? The DRC reviewed this on the August 13 meeting and deemed it to be administratively complete and recommended approval of this plat, as does the Assistant Planning Director. Any questions?
I have one. Since this has been laying waste for a long time, I remember seeing it on more than one occasion. It was initially developed under old development rules that we had and planning and zoning rules that we had. Do they comport with everything we have now? Any other changes that we may have made for its drainage or anything else?
Yes, so they do, so when they, they vested to their standards, so their lot standards, their roads, their road layout, all of that is in their agreement, and that's what they can, how they can lay everything out and develop under. Drainage standards, utility standards, those all have to come up to our current codes. So, this is all using our new drainage manual. They actually went through our new process, so the city engineer did approve the preliminary drainage plan and the preliminary infrastructure plan based off of all of our updated stormwater manual and construction manuals.
And Carrie, you'll hear the words, DRC, a lot, Design Review Committee. It's a group of folks that get together and look at the drainage and how it comports with all of our rules, and it's, a project's not accepted or a proposal's not accepted until this committee all agrees that it's up to our standards. So, you'll be hearing that a lot.
Thank you.
And I will say, this development overall, the West Bastrop Village, when they came in, in 2006, the reason why they did it, you know, as a mud and had to have a specific agreement was they were trying to get those denser lots, those alley-loaded units, all the things that actually do conform a lot more closely with our B-3 code than it did our previous codes.
Anybody at home have any questions?
I have a question. When they go before the DRC, did they also turn in a, like, an illustrative plan of the overall concept, or is it strictly this type of regulating plan?
They do have, their development, their Plan Development Agreement has all of that in it already. So, they actually, within that document, have an overall master plan that lays out the streets and general kind of lot layouts, and then they, within that, it has very specific standards for lot sizes, lot uses, and then different, in their document, they went as far as specific street cross-sections and examples of development. So, it's actually a fairly long document that they really locked down. So, they, I would imagine they may come back in the future and want to revise that, since it was set in 2006. Markets have changed, so I wouldn't be surprised if in the near future, after they get these first several sections rolling, they may want to revise the overall master plan.
Do we know how quickly, when they're, work on the housing units, they're going to be incorporating the commercial aspect of it, or...
They, they, right now are focused on this first residential section, trying to get that going. What's the big, one of the holdups is that the city's been working with them for several years to be the wholesale wastewater service for this development, so they will serve and take care of all the infrastructure for the wastewater inside the development. The city will wholesale that service. What was holding that up was the construction of our new wastewater treatment plant, which is underway. So, this is trying to line up with that. So, I think they're still kind of waiting till that, you know, this section gets on the ground to start looking at those commercial sections, so...
I'm sorry, I'm having, again, still a hard time, but she, I think part of my question was asked, the commercial, the commercial piece that's at the front, can you go back to that screen?
Colin will have to flip me over. Yeah, so in their plan, they call out a couple commercial, they do have a town center in the middle of the entire development with the road layout, because that Weaverton, they also have another access. You can see how it touches 71, that they'll be able to come in with the main entrance off of that 71. So, they'll have a couple entry points into this development, and they do have kind of some planned town centers, but they do have some reserved space along 21, or 20 for some smaller commercial. They're not huge lots, so they would mostly be things that could serve the development right off of the highway.
And is that commercial development for their use or for the...
It would, the streets, the streets will be publicly dedicated, so and publicly accessible. They don't have any plans to gate anything, so this will be accessible to the public. So, yeah, that, anyone can use that commercial.
Okay.
It'd be good to see that, those other drawings, maybe, just trying to wrap my mind around the drawings here, it'd be nice to see some of those other plans, maybe not all of them, but at least what they're thinking long-term. I did have a question, though, but it was alluded to about how this is not on city sewer yet, so you're saying, can you go over how that's going to be handled? Is it on separate?
So, no, it will be on city sewer. That's, this is, they're at the preliminary, I can't say, preliminary plat stage. They're basically getting all of their entitlements for the preliminary plat, their public improvement plans, all of those lined up, so when the sewer plant comes online, they'll be able to, to put those units on the ground. They have some off-site improvements that there are also in the review of the city engineer that he's, approved those as well, that has the main line going back to our new wastewater treatment plant.
Is it going through the alley? Are they using the alleys for a lot of the utilities?
I believe so. Trey, man. Well, so the main sewer's going through what we call East Bastrop Village, it's going through that, that property that's, it's between the RV Park and Shiloh Road, it cuts across that property. But the, for the lines within the development, I believe the sewer lines are going along the main, the main thoroughfare roads, and the telecoms and, I think, electric are going in the alleys.
So, to kind of go along with what Pablo is asking about the, the treatment of whatever, the water, the waste treatment of that neighborhood, what kind of impact is that? Have they lifted that, the impact that it's going to have on our future treatment plant?
Yes, they, they...
Yeah, you could say the future treatment plant.
So, we have an agreement with them that Trey has been working very hard on for the last little bit, that locks down how much capacity they, that they're reserving in that new plant, so...
Okay. How many residents is expected to be there?
So, a full build out will be 1,200 units, but...
1,200 units?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, that's a huge impact on our treatment system.
But they, they have been one of the driving forces for getting the new wastewater treatment plant in place, so they have been definitely taken into account with the sizing of the new facility.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, my last question about the alleys, I think that's a great concept. I'm really in favor of using alleys to put as much, you know, infrastructure in there, and had a question about the, I guess, the fire hydrants, the location. Are we encouraging that to happen in the alley, or are those happening outside in the streets?
Those are happening outside in the streets. All of the fire access, so, will be served from the streets, the alleys, while a fire truck could theoretically get down them, that there's more room in the streets to, there's only, there's no parking on one side of all those streets to leave room for fire access.
So, all the, all the access, or the garage will be from the alley?
Mm-hmm, yes.
That's what I thought.
And there's no concern with fire access with the ingress and egress being on one side of the development and not on the other side of the development?
On the houses?
The houses, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's how all houses are now, because usually you have two rows of houses that back up to each other and that...
But, I mean, they're, they're laid out longitudinally, and you have access from 20 and from 71, but this end has no, no exit, in case of fire.
So, right now, they have two, they have two ways in and out for the 91 units, and that meets fire. Fire is reviewed, they're part of our Development Review Committee, so they have reviewed this plan and all the public improvement plans as well. They're a part of that, that review.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Now, and going back to the alleys...
Okay.
I'll wait. Someone got a question.
Okay, Glenn, go ahead.
Well, to follow up on...
Going back to me.
Hang on, Pablo.
When it's, this is, this, you're saying that there will be other exits on the western side of this track as it builds out, right?
There'll be another one onto 71, and there'll be potentially one to the south. That's up to Tech Dot on how many exits they can have onto FM 20.
Okay. Thank you.
Pablo?
So, there's, there's only two ways to get in, right? That's what we're saying?
For this section, yes. For future sections, there'll be additional, there'll be some additional ways in and out, so...
Pablo?
Okay, and going back to the alleys and utilities, and I'm not an expert on it, but are we gonna, are we looking at the fire lines for each of those streets, the Weaverton, Gouda, and Axel? If we ran them in the alleys, would that be one fewer fire line, or, I mean, one of the benefits of having an alley is you can, you can, you know, run your utilities for both sides of those lots, but, I mean, I'm not the engineer on this, but I was wondering, was that, was that talked about with the developer?
I know Fire has reviewed this and it's met all of our 2018 International Fire Code requirements for this subdivision, so, I know our Assistant Fire Chief, who's our Fire Marshal, has reviewed it. He had, he had a lot of back and forth with the engineers, so I know it's meeting all of our, our fire code that I feel that it'll be adequately protected, so...
Yeah, I think it is. I was just wondering if we could get by, you know, with running the utilities in the alleys. One of the benefits of having alleys is the ability to run your utilities down the alley and serve both sides of those, those lots, top and bottom, as I'm looking at the plan. And I don't know if that was discussed, I'm just airing this out because I had a question about it, and...
It was not discussed during the review.
I got you.
Would the alley, would the alley just be smaller in terms of being able to get utilities back there? Would the, are the alleys designed, going to be designed to be smaller than the main road where the hydrants would go?
Yes, the main, the main roads are, I believe, 28 feet of pavement, and the alleys are 20, 20 feet. Well, the 20 feet of right-of-way, they'll be narrower in pavement, so I think the alleys are, I want to say 18 feet, but they may, I would have to look at the public improvement plans to see the actual widths, but it wasn't, they weren't wide enough to take fire access off of, so... Plus, the way that they're designed, they're not, the fire truck couldn't turn around in them, which is the bigger concern.
I would...
Well, that's what I was going to get to. I saw that the radius on those, on their label, and there's a table down there, and there's a 15-foot turning radius, and, I mean, you probably could get a fire truck in there. I've seen this down in some other places, and they ran the fire lane, or the, the water for the fire hydrants down the alleys, and I thought that was pretty smart. So, I don't know if that's a better way to go or not, I'm just raising the concern that, you know, it looks like if we did fire lines on each of the streets, then we have three fire lines. If you ran them down the alleys, it looks like you could get by with two, and then that vertical one on Alley F, but that was just me thinking out loud.
Yeah, I will say, the engineer, the design engineer for the developer submitted what, of course, they feel is the best value engineering, and it meets our code, so...
Okay.
Which is, what, if it meets our codes, then it passes muster for our subdivision rules, so...
Right. It's not something we can dictate.
But we take over the utilities when it's all built down, correct?
No. No, we do not in this case. The utilities for this subdivision will be taken over by the Municipal Utility District.
Okay.
Yeah, so we don't, within this, within this, we don't take over the utilities. So, that, that does play a little bit into their design, because, I mean, they are going to be responsible for that through at least the life of the municipal utility debt. Cities cannot annex municipal utilities until, unless we're willing to take over their debt, which usually we are not. So, that usually has a shelf life of 25 to 35 years, so we're looking at this being owned by the Municipal Utility District for the next 25 to 35 years, if not forever, so...
Yeah, that's all I had.
Anything else? Any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the plat.
Ah, carry, move to approve. Is there a second?
Aye, second.
Second, Mike Glenn. Call the roll, please, ma'am.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, no. Carrie Kaler?
Yes.
Glenn Johnson?
Yes.
Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Cheryl Lee?
Yeah.
Greg Sherry?
Yes.
Ishmael Harris?
Oh, yes.
Pablo Serna?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Now, we will convene into our workshop session of item 4A for discussion on Bastrop Building, Block B3 Code, related to subdivision authority, including but not limited to why is it important, Local Government Code, Chapter 212, Municipal Regulations of Subdivisions in Property Development, 1445 Interlocal Agreement with Bastrop County for Extraterritorial Jurisdiction, Subdivision Review, could you make those words any longer, Plating Exemptions and Exception, Major Thoroughfare Map and Grid System, Direction for B3 Code Updates.
So, just a reminder, last meeting, we kind of went over a schedule, tentative schedule of that, over the next several months, staff is going to bring several topics forward from the B3 Codes that we've, now that we've had a year to implement the code and really work with it, to bring any modifications that we would like you all to consider and give us some direction on. The first one we really wanted to delve into was the subdivision, and we're going to start tonight with, we have Matthew Lewis here, he was the, he and his staff helped us craft the B3 Code, and he's helping us, he's an extension of our team to really help us delve deep into this topic and come up with creative solutions, and make sure we're still meeting the intent of Bastrop being fiscally sustainable, authentically Bastrop, and geographically sensitive. So, I'll let Matt kind of start, you know, the discussion with why is plating important?
All right. Oh, okay. Either way, I'll sit back here, so you can be up there if you want, Jennifer. And I can see all of them as well. Commissioner, Chair, would you like me to step up there?
Can everybody at home hear Mr. Lewis?
Can you all hear me okay?
I hear better, but it's still, I just have just the strain.
Why don't you get up here, Matt, if you can?
Sure. Good evening, Commissioners. Matt Lewis, Simple City Design Chair, Vice Chairs. Today, we're here to talk about plating, and I think that the two items that you all had on your agenda today and the questions you asked emphasize why plating is important. So, you all kind of highlighted these reasons, ingress, egress, water lines, placement of infrastructure. Oftentimes, communities are actually built by their plat standards. As you noticed and stated by staff today, we can't deny a subdivision that meets your minimum standards, and so if you require a D minus for your community, you will achieve a D minus for your community. If you ask for an A plus or a B plus, you'll get a B plus, because that's setting your standards for your development patterns of what you want to become and how you actually get to those results. Plating is the legal creation of buildable parcels of land, and plating is regulated by state law as well as local subdivision ordinances. You look at this development pattern on the screen here, and you will notice that each of the individual components, please work, okay, are separated. So, you'll have schools located here, separated from the housing. You'll notice these housing types look different from these housing types, and it creates a series of disconnected and isolated pods. These types of development patterns come with great challenges. They are, require extensive, extensive and expensive infrastructure. It requires long distances to travel from place to place. It creates an isolation of disconnected housing types, different socioeconomic classes. The isolation of services requires you to have to drive across the street to access, you know, your basic necessities. We've been plating for a long time, and humans have been building settlements for centuries, right? Here's the original town plat of Bastrop, and look at how calm, organized, and well-laid out and defined this pattern of development is versus the previous pattern. The reason that this is important is because your plating standards will establish the rules and parameters for what you are trying to accomplish. We changed the plating standards and the transportation standards here with the B3 Code, and we'll go through those standards and what they mean throughout this presentation. The emphasis of today is really going to be highlighting on the extraterritorial jurisdiction and the area outside of your jurisdictional city limit boundaries, which you have very fine-grained codes on that provide the framework for a timeless, authentic, and fiscally sustainable community, which is what we've been using currently. Plating basics. The governance of plating is facilitated through state law, Chapter 212, and by way of the B3 Code. What we did in Bastrop was one of the most bold attempts at reducing plating standards where we're not over-regulating and we're allowing some market trends to shift, yet you're still getting good development patterns, and these development patterns are critical to the long-term success of the community. So, essentially, what was done in the B3 Codes was a direct correlation and adoption of Chapter 212, with not many standards above Chapter 212, including no minimum lot dimensions within Bastrop. This is pretty unheard of in the state of Texas. I don't know anyone else that's doing this, but it seems to be going really well, and the developments that are being facilitated through this code are going to be dramatically different and better than what you've had and seen previously, based off of my humble opinion of these development patterns. Plating provides precise descriptions of the land being divided, and they're mapped, and then they're communicated via text. These are the physical boundaries on the ground of how the actual land will be subdivided into buildable lots. Plats provide public lands and utilities required by the code. This includes streets, drainage, parks, civic space, those characteristics. Plats ensure that land is divided, meets all state law and B3 Code requirements, and plats provide orderly development patterns to ensure that the legal sale of the land is possible. Oops, I'm rolling through here, Renee. Oops, sorry, hold on, hold on. Jennifer's coming up in this part. Okay, Jennifer, do you want to cover the two types of plats?
We're tag-teaming this presentation today. So, within the city limits, we have two types of plats, and a lot of that is dictated by Chapter 212, and then we further have standards within, or processes within, the B3 Code. So, we have two different plats. A standard plat helps you do the initial plating, it gives you a process for plat modifications, and is a public process. So, that's what you've seen tonight, is we first have the preliminary plat that comes in and lays out an entire subdivision. With that, before they, the preliminary plat comes to you, they've done some engineering to make sure that the roads are going to work, that they can get water lines looped appropriately through that, and they get the whole development. Sometimes, the, some of them like to come in, you know, 91 lots at a time. We've had some come in, you know, and plat 400 lots at a time, and then break them down in smaller final plats. So, our, after the preliminary plat gets established, that document can live for several years while they're building out that full development. After the preliminary plat, they come in with individual public improvement plans, and this is part of where the local government code gives us the authority to plat. Our local rules are what sets the standards for what kind of utilities need to go in the ground to be able to serve different kinds of development, what kind of a street needs to go there, how, how do you build that street? All those rules come in, in that plating stage with the public improvement plans. Once that we make sure that infrastructure will be in place to serve the lots, then that's when they come in with the final plat, that that's the official document that lays out those depictions, those text documents, that give you your legal lot, that you go file that plat at the courthouse, and that is, draws the subdivision out. So, you can kind of see a basic kind of layout of how we see a block in the city, you know, laying out with different, different sized lots, and all of those would have the appropriate streets, appropriate utilities that run to each lot to serve the different types of development in that. We also have administrative plat processes. Those are for smaller projects, and those can be administratively reviewed and approved by staff. That power is given through the local government code. Those involve what's called a minor plat, which is for four or fewer lots that don't require the extension of infrastructure and don't require the plating of new streets. It's also for amending plats, is one you'll see, and that's for tweaks to a property line, someone built their fence wrong, they need to move the line over, they need to remove a line because the lot wasn't quite big enough. Those kind of administrative plats are approved by staff. Occasionally, some commercial replats can be also administratively approved. Within our B3 Code, we have a flow chart that gives you the basic development process, and this is what, this is how we develop a subdivision in the city limits. It starts with your character district and your place type. So, when we develop the B3 Code, it's what planners like to call Unified Development Code. It really intertwines your subdivision and your zoning standards. So, we start with our character districts, which is a development pattern type. You have your traditional neighborhood development, which is more of your grid streets. You have village center development, which lays out a center and has the developments kind of radiate out from that village center, and then you have cluster development, which allows you to do denser pockets of development with a larger conservation space around, to take advantage of, especially in geographically sensitive areas. In our code, we evaluate that in your place type, whether or not you're a P3, which is a residential use, or a P5, which is your denser, commercial, mixed-use category. Once those are established, then we start looking at how big is your property. For infill developments, you have lesser requirements, you may not have to plat. When you have larger developments and you need to start establishing those place types, you have to do what's either called a zoning concept scheme that lays out your uses, lays out your streets, which then feeds into your plating process, or a neighborhood regulating plan, which all, you don't have to change your underlying place type, but it still has you establish what type of streets you're doing, how those lots are going to be oriented in each block. So, this is how the plating works in the city limits. From, once you get the plating done, then we have development standards that give you your, well, you have your block standards, you have your different street types, you have different civic spaces that are required within those plats. We also have, that's pretty unique to Bastrop, is our master transportation plan. With the B3 Code, we also adopted, this is part of our transportation plan, is we proactively laid out a gridded network of our 720-foot block structure. And that 720-foot block structure ties back to our farm lots, so that, that map, that the original town tract that Matt showed you earlier was broken down into 720-foot farm lots, roughly there, and 330-foot building blocks. So, that's our backbone for how we see the city developing. The benefits of this, one of the challenges we had in our old standard of subdivision was we would require each development, if they did a, were going to create a certain amount of traffic, they had to do their own traffic impact analysis. Well, they would do theirs, and then someone else would do theirs down the street. If they were going on at the same time, they didn't know what the other person was doing, it wasn't accurately reflecting the full traffic impact. By creating a grid, you create a network of streets that create parallel routes that allow people to, if one street is busy or has a traffic jam, you can move to another parallel route. So, the grid alleviates a lot of that need for traffic impact analysis and trying to figure out if you're dumping, you know, 800 houses onto this one intersection, what is that going to do? Instead, you'll have multiple ways in and out for those subdivisions for those 800 homes.
And just for reference, the grid was only adopted in your statutory ETJ, this master transportation plan?
Yeah, so you'll see that those white lines just kind of stop at a certain point, and that's the edge of our statutory ETJ, which goes into plating in the ETJ. So, the city, in our current size, we have a by right, it's called a one-mile statutory ETJ for the size of Bastrop. That's what the local government code gives us as a planning area. It gives us a buffer of that area that may someday be in the city limits or will definitely impact adjacent city, city limits properties. So, we're the subdivision authority in that region. We also have a much larger voluntary extraterritorial jurisdiction that was annexed into the ETJ in the 80s, late, mid to late 80s, in response to development pressure from Austin. So, you'll see we have three different colors. The dark green area is our statutory area, the middle green area is our Area A, and the lighter green is Area B. So, Area A and Area B are our voluntary ETJ. Area A is the section that the city has agreed to be the regulatory authority for with the county. So, we have what's called, and that was why I linked all the different documents that feed into where do we get our subdivision authority from.
And just to make note, if you look at the scale of the land area of your statutory city limits in comparison to your statutory ETJ, to the optional area of Bastrop, that's your future city limits possibly, it's your future growth areas, it establishes your corridors, your gateways into town. The land area and the jurisdiction that Bastrop has is very fortunate to have that area. It's beautiful countryside. It is the quintessential drive out of the city into this beautiful, small town, and to preserve and protect those view corridors and that landscape is within y'all's jurisdiction from an environmental standpoint, from a subdivision standpoint, from a signage standpoint. And so, some of the key characteristics that it requires to establish good development patterns are within your jurisdiction. So, we thought this map was extremely imperative for you all to see and appreciate the massive land area outside of what we consider Bastrop that is really Bastrop's jurisdictional areas.
Yeah, the other important part to note is a lot of that is upstream on the Colorado River, which is our primary water source and recreation for the city, so that's something we want to make sure is protected as development occurs, especially along that 969 corridor. Part of the reason why the state gives cities these regulatory authorities for subdivision, they also give some limited, we have stormwater regulation, signage regulation, and potentially driveway regulation, depending on how our 1445 is set up. Those are all things that feed into the safety and well-being of the city and their surrounding areas. Those are all things the state felt was important to allow cities to regulate outside of their corporate city limits. So, why it's important, it could be our potential future city limits. There have been.
Area A is city and county. What's, who regulates Area B?
The county.
Just the county?
Just the county. So, what, so what happens is everything in the statutory in Area A come to the city. We are, it's our subdivision regulations that apply. We do provide the county with a, they participate in our review, but it's our regulations that apply. For Area B, they are the primary reviewer, and they give us a review as well. So, we do talk back and forth in those areas on how they impact each other. Once it is subdivided, however, development permits for actually building structures, those go through the county. So, that's why setting, making sure it's set up right in the subdivision can impact the future development patterns and growth and outside of our city limits. So, that kind of feeds into why it's important to, it could be our future city limits. There have been, in recent years, some changes made to our annexation authority, and that is to be said, though, state can take it away, they could also give it back to us in the future. So, we don't want to necessarily turn our back to the ETJ and say, well, we're never going to be out there, because, and we may not, we may not be out there, but it still impacts the city limits, so that's why it can be important. It's the gateway into our city. Everyone is driving along 71, 969, that's how they get to us from Austin. It also provides our stormwater infrastructure and protects our waterways. Future street network, traffic can be something that we'll all experience going that direction. We want to make sure that those, that's taken care of coming to and from the city. And just to ensure orderly development, because it maintains everyone's property values and ensures that you don't have. values and ensures that you don't have utility shortfalls out in those areas in the future because they weren't properly planned.
I have a question.
Sure.
Oh, maybe that's what you're about to explain. I think that's what you're about to explain.
Okay. I'll explain it if you have a question that you can ask. So we have with the county, at some point in the nineties, the state said, if you have this area that overlaps, city and county, work together and figure out which one of you regulates it. Don't make people go to both of you. So in the House Bill 1445 said, pick which one, who's in charge. So the city and county adopted the 1445 interlocal agreement, and that's the point at which we split out that voluntary ETJ area on whose rules are applicable, what rules even in the statutory ETJ are applicable to the city versus the county. So with that, that's what gives us our authority, that they come to us if it's a statutory or Area A, they go to the county if it's Area B. So one of the things, we're hoping to get some feedback from y'all on this. With subdivision, there are also some, and I went over this briefly a couple of meetings ago, we also have exceptions or exemptions from plating. So we would like some feedback on when you think those are appropriate for different developments. One that's set in the local government code is for properties greater than five acres that don't require extension of public improvements. So there's some built in. Within our current code, we've built in what we've always liked to call the lot of record or the legal lot standard, that if you existed as of April 20th, 1981, and you haven't changed your lot and you have street access, that will acknowledge that your lot has standing and you don't have to plat. But if you've changed your lot lines post, after that date, you do have to come into compliance with our subdivision regulations. So those are some of the exemptions and exceptions. There may be some others that we see as appropriate that we may bring forward. And if you have had any feedback, one of the things that we're wanting to do is to maybe tie some of those triggers to the county development permits as well. That's how they use, people know they need to plat, is usually they go to the county to get their development permit. The county checks to see if they have a lot of record and they send them to us to get that letter. So that's where the plating usually comes in, in the ETJ. One of the ways, since we're, our goal with subdivision regulation is to protect health and safety, onsite septic or sewer permits is one way to do that because that's a big trigger for how big your lots have to be. If you have well access, you need certain size requirements of lots. So one of the things, as I talked about, we have a unified development code, right? And we have our flow chart that starts with character districts and place types. We don't regulate use in the ETJ, we only regulate subdivisions. So we can't start in the green bar on the flow chart. We have to just start with subdivision regulation in the ETJ. And we don't have clear triggers. The main, the main thing that we have right now is that master transportation plan that if you, in the statutory ETJ, that you have to build to that block structure. Past that, we don't have any lot standards in, or smaller blocks standards than that. So that's one thing that we're going to come back with is some proposals for different subdivision standards. We, in our previous code, did have city standards that tied to the zoning, and then we had subdivision standards for the extraterritorial jurisdictions, usually called the rural standards. So we're going to look at some of those, on bringing those back and adopting some street standards for those that make sense for rural development. A lot of our, we have 11 different cross-sections in our code. Any of those could be applied if it's in the appropriate place. There may be some additional rural standards that we need to look at to provide the right level of development for the county.
Some of the items that we're, I mean, managing growth in the ETJ in the state of Texas is difficult because we don't have land use regulations in the ETJ. And so utilizing the tools that we have most effectively to secure upstream stormwater management detention ponds, so that you don't have downstream flow issues or small area flooding, could be taken care of in these issues, I'm sorry, in these areas. Establishing, if development occurs, what the threshold of disturbance would be before triggering plating. State law exempts anything over five acres that would allow them to plat by right, by state law. And so are there items in there that we can align with a county? Because five-acre tracts may have additional buildings on them that are requiring onsite septic permits that they're getting from the county. And the city may not be aware that this is going on because all of it's staying under the radar for the jurisdictional review of the city. And what's happening is it's piecemealing developments out there and it could create areas where lots may not have public frontage. And so you can get colonials. Those types of things are really detrimental long-term because they're extremely difficult to go back and retrofit. They're hard to go back and try and acquire access easements, to put roads across properties that have been sold by meets and bounds, which is like just a, without actually going through the plating process, and then trying to come back and put these standards in place. So what we would like to seek direction on tonight is the allowance for us to go back and write clearly defined ETJ standards for subdivision, linking those standards to the stormwater management system and the county's onsite septic permits. We believe if we could align these triggers and these processes, then a lot of the developments that are taking place in the ETJ that are slipping through the cracks would then be caught and brought to the forefront so that you're not dealing with issues later that are extremely complex. We can catch them on the front end, have a few headaches on the front end as we're going through this, but not have developments that are built, you know, with infrastructure that doesn't meet your standards, with development patterns that don't emulate your goals or your desires, and, you know, maybe drainage was not even thought of and now you have small area flooding in areas that you didn't have previously. So what we would love to do is come back with a series of ETJ standards with road cross-sections, alignment of these processes. We would work with the county, the city staff, and see if we can really pull this together to streamline the ETJ process. Again, as you saw, the land area is so massive, we believe that it's imperative for the city to be on the forefront of addressing this rather than sitting back and waiting for a later date.
I have a question. Can I ask a question?
Yes. Yes, please.
And Matt, you're kind of headed towards what I was thinking about development occurring in the ETJ and beyond. That's not really going to be coordinated well between what we're trying to do as a big picture. And I'll take, for example, it looks like development along 969 is going to happen pretty quick, like we're seeing it on 20 and 304. But the way they're developing, they're just these drive-in type subdivisions. And I know, take for example, the presentation we had earlier with 3A, where they were thinking about commercial up on front along 20. It'd be great to try to coordinate that. I don't know how we would do that outside on FM 969, but just start to think about it in that way, that we want to have FM 969 be thought about that way so you don't just drive into it. There would be some shops along there. What are your thoughts?
Yes, sir. I think that's extremely important and I'm glad you called attention to 969. 969 leaves MLK Boulevard in Austin, Texas. It's a beautiful street, it's a historic street, and it terminates directly into downtown Bastrop. It's a beautiful drive. The countryside is gorgeous. I believe that Bastrop would be, it would be in the city's best interest to allocate that as a key corridor and to come up with standards. Again, it is in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. We don't have land use authority, but you do have subdivision authority and you can regulate, regulate's not even the word, guide. You can guide development patterns through your subdivision regulations with good, clear standards. And the hope is that we could really write standards that would allow for flexible development, not overly costly developments, using rural cross-sections instead of having straight-line trees and curb and gutter. Maybe it's meandering and trails instead of formal paved sidewalks. So our hope is that we can bring back a series of tools to you all that would be applicable in the ETJ without trying to increase cost, but also still getting the quality of development that the city deserves.
I have a question. Without dictating land use, is there a way of directing development so that you have diversity, like commercial corridor diversity? You know, what I see coming up a lot along that 969 corridor is a lot of service stations, a lot of, you know, Dollar Generals, Dollar Trees, and creating, you know, situations where there's kind of a food desert or services desert. And so, you know, I don't want to tell people, "You can have this and you can't have this," but at the same time, we have to, people who live in that area should be afforded the same benefits as people living in downtown Bastrop or, you know, downtown Austin, East Austin. So how do we, do you have recommendations for how to direct that?
One of the tools is going to be driveway standards. You'll notice you're getting a lot of curb cuts. Creates dangerous road patterns, you know, particularly in fast-moving lanes. Unfortunately, TexDOT's cross-section that they're paving 969 actually is telling the landowners that you want curb cuts. When you have a center, continuous center turn lane, and it may be advantageous on that road based on the traffic patterns, I mean, I'm not the traffic engineer, I know they've done studies, but it is, it directly correlates back to your land use patterns. It's sending signals. I believe the best tool that we're going to have is going to be through the subdivision authority, and that is going to be our key tool. So you can establish lot patterns that would allow for different uses. And so, and maybe there's no lot minimums, or maybe there are lot minimums that would help in certain areas. The city does have the jurisdictional authority to determine where those patterns go and how. We could set corridors that we say, "This is a corridor. These are the lot standards along this corridor. These are how you build your setbacks into those standards." So it is possible to do that, but it's a, it gets complex and, you know, it's a policy decision as well. So what we would do is prepare something that would allow you all to do this and then take it to the policymakers and say, "Do you really want to do this?" So.
Our best way to influence the development patterns and all that is through connectivity. So creating block standards that emulate, like, do we want just to, within Area A, continue our 720-block layout? Either layout or do we just want to have a minimum that you can't have any block longer than 720? Do we want to make some of those be 330 if you want to do certain types of, certain sizes of lots? And then with our stormwater regulations, that's another way we can help guide some of that kind of, that development. Because your stormwater management rules will dictate, the denser your development for commercial especially, then you'll have to do some additional development costs in those.
It would seem to me that it would be extremely beneficial to act on this sooner than later. It's hard to fix after it's already there. So although we can't dictate, and we really don't want to dictate, and we want to maintain the quality and the country feel and the beautiful drive that 969 is, if we can help to keep it that way by guiding and coming up with guidance sooner the better, I think it would be very prudent of this group to do that. Anybody else have questions or comments?
I think that I'm kind of, I'm much in favor of it. I'm excited, actually, to know that this might even be a possibility because I've been greatly concerned about the saturation within the city limits. So to know that we have some options to expand, that is wonderful news for me. I, though, also think that if we are primarily focusing on placing a bunch of houses, particularly along 969, that we need to allow, we do need to allow, I would think, for some amenities for the people living along 969. And then with that, my concerns would be, it is, it is a very windy road. I actually don't, I actually don't enjoy driving it because it's so windy, especially at night. But that brings up concerns to me in terms of the traffic that is on that road. Traffic concerns, will the road, will the, would, down, and I'm talking long-term here, would the road need to be expanded to be four lanes across instead of just a middle lane for a turny? I mean, those are things we'd probably be talking about long-term, but I do think in the short term, it should, there should be some consideration for what other type of amenities, just besides subdivisions, what are we going to be providing for those people moving into those subdivisions to accommodate those needs?
I think the market's going to determine that more than we ever would. You know, build it and they will come. Build it and you'll need to build other things, too. So I think what we want to do is, you can build a lot of type of amenities that are attractive, or you can have amenities that ain't so cute. You know, we would like to set some guidance there for the amenities that are needed in order to try to keep the character and the beauty of that area while still providing for what the people of the area who are there now, in the near future and the future at infinitum, to set standards in, for what they need and what will come, while protecting them.
And what I mean by amenities is like gas stations or like she said, the Dollar General.
Right.
And when I say amenities, that's what I mean.
Sure.
Things that they can run around the corner and grab instead of having to come all the way into town.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And I will say, one of the economic development phrases we all use is, "Commercial follows rooftops." So the more residential you get in those areas, those, those commercial developments will come eventually, and we just need to be able to make sure that we're requesting and requiring the right road types, right connectivity, to make sure all of those residential areas connect to the commercial areas.
I believe, too, that last year, TexDOT allocated like $10 million to widen 969 between...
It's right at the edge of the Travis County border.
Is it?
Yeah. So that TexDOT does have, and we do work with TexDOT and meet with them somewhat regularly. We're planning to get that back going, to make sure we're meeting their vision and their needs, too. Like, we're not encouraging a development pattern that's against what TexDOT's planning. But I looked up the other day and they do plan to widen the entirety of 969, but it's in their plans for like 2045.
Oh.
It's a ways out. So there are some others, but I will say, like, the colony development, that's one that with the quantity of development they're doing there, TexDOT is requiring them to participate in a traffic signal. So there are developments. Through the subdivision regulations, you can require some of those infrastructure improvements, that they have to do those improvements that make those roads safer, that provide for that long-term growth.
And just because it's for 2045 doesn't mean it'll always stay there.
No.
If development occurs quicker, then it may, it'll go up on the priority level. So I think you're hearing from the commission, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this is something that we really think is a positive thing to do and to move forward, to bring things back to us that we can discuss. Does anybody have anything they want to add other than what Jennifer and Matt have discussed? I think we'll get down the road and we'll be talking about a lot of different things. But to get things off the ground, I think what you guys have talked about would be a great start.
I have one more thing.
Sure.
Want to go back to scenic corridors? Is that going to be a discussion down the road? You talked about signage, and I know one way to kind of help that grow right is to establish maybe a scenic corridors. I know, Matt, do you have any ideas on that?
There are scenic city allowances. I mean, you know, if that's something that the commission would like us to explore, I think that's a great option. There's a lot of resources out there for establishing a scenic city and scenic corridors. We could align those types of perimeters with our study, Commissioner.
And that would be regulated through the sign code.
Sign code.
So we do have that authority to impose sign codes along those corridors, so we could look at that as part of this overall rewrite of how we're going to address that.
Great. Anything else? Thank you. Trying to find my agenda. Any updates on item five, update, update on recent city council actions regarding planning department items?
Well, we took the, I think that's happened probably since we've last met, but we did take the Bastrop Grove amendment. take the Bastrop Grove amendment forward, so that's, I think, the last thing the council has approved that has come from P and Z, so.
Okay.
Not a lot of. It is National Planning Month for the month of October.
Yay.
Celebrate your planners' day.
[laughing]
And the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Y'all have done a Herculean job over the last three years, especially in light of fluctuating staff and directors and the like. You all have done a great job.
Thank you.
Item 5B, individual requests from P and Planning and zoning commissioners about particular items to be listed on future agendas. I think we've given you a task, keeping in mind that I still want to, at one point, get back to reviewing the comprehensive plan.
And that's been a part of the discussion of your comprehensive plan, is also what feeds into your extraterritorial jurisdiction plan, so that is definitely something we want to circle back to.
I'll just be like a broken record, you hear that from me all the time. Okay. Is there anything?
I have one.
Pablo, where'd you go?
Yes, can I get an update on the Planning Director?
So right now, we're focusing on hiring some of our other positions. We actually have been interviewing for a planning tech, because we do plan on reopening the building here in the next couple weeks. So, and we, one, another thing that we've just implemented in the last six weeks, eight weeks, is the MyGov, which is our new online tracking system. So we're trying to fill some of those other positions to help with those, the log of getting that up and running, getting our older information reflected in the system, and handling, there's been a lot of uptick in development recently. Viviana has been very busy issuing trade permits constantly. So getting some additional administrative staff on board has been the primary focus right now, so, and that, but that's kind of fruition, so. We may have more updates on Planning Director in the future, so.
Great. And once again, kudos to all of you. Proud of you. Which brings us to item six, adjournment.
Which we now learn needs a motion and a second, if you attended the training the other day, so.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I've moved to adjourn.
Motion, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Everyone, have a great evening.